Good evening, Glendale, and welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call?
Yes, council members Brotman.
Here.
Rarpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatrian.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you. Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tangva people. As we convene on this election day, let us reflect on the courageous individuals who paved the way for the rights and freedoms we cherish today. May we draw inspiration from their resilience and determination as we navigate the challenges and opportunities before us. I'd like to leave you with the words of suffragette and abolitionist Susan B. Anthony. Someone struggled for your right to vote. Use it. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, polls will be closing at 8:00 PM. So if you have not voted yet, you can drop off your ballot or stop by at any vote center in LA County to cast your ballot. If you are in line at 8:00 PM, you have the right to vote. If you are not registered to vote, or you've moved since you've last registered, you can stop by at any vote center, register to vote on the spot, and cast your ballot, and they'll give you a provisional ballot if I'm not mistaken.
That's right. And if you would like to see where your closest polling location is, visit glandeldevotes.org, and you could actually search for the ballot drop boxes and locations there.
Thank you. All right. And with that, may we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for November 5th, 2024, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on October 31st, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Right, and what's next?
Next are presentations and appointments. Item A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, provided by Assistant City Manager John Tuktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Asatrian, members of City Council. Next week, we'll have a special City Council meeting in the afternoon. There will be one item for Community Development regarding a public hearing for Stage 1 design review. That's related to a new 105-unit, eight-story multifamily building at 820 North Central Avenue. The next item also will be from Community Development, and that'll be related to Phase 2 improvements to the entitlement and permitting process. The evening meeting has a number of consent items, two consent items specifically. The first is from Public Works, where they'll be seeking approval of several contracts related to building, maintenance, and repair services at various city facilities. And the next item will be from Library Arts and Culture, where they'll be requesting an amendment to a contract with Midwest Tape LLC to continue Hoopla Digital Services. We have one action item that evening from the City Attorney's Office. It'll be related to a number of different things in one report. Specifically, it'll include rules of conduct for council meetings, options for oral communications and public comment on agenda items, matters related to order of business of council agendas, discussion of policy for removing items from the agenda and publications, rules governing decorum and removing disruptive individuals from City Council meetings. And we'll finalize that evening with four separate hearings, all four from Community Development. The first one will be a public hearing related to ordinances, an ordinance amending Title 30 of the Municipal Code related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The next three will be consideration of Glendale Registered Nominations and requests for Mills Act historic property contracts for properties located at 1504 Bel Air Drive, 3235 Cornwall Drive, and 2535 East Chevy Chase Drive.
Thank you. And we are going to be continuing Item 3B to a future meeting. What's next?
Next, consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Great.
I'll move the consent calendar?
Right. We don't have any cards, correct?
Do not have any cards.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Council members Brotman.
Yes.
I'm good, thank you.
Rarpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Next?
Next are City Council and staff comments.
All right, who'd like to go first?
I don't have anything.
Anyone?
Just briefly, again, reminder for Election Day, but also a reminder that this Monday is Veterans Day. In the past, we've done, I think there have been some events, but for some time, we have been dormant. I know it started during COVID. I would like us to ask our staff to look into doing something. I saw another city doing for Veterans Day, perhaps hosting a lunch for veterans, as well as a resource fair. I think, you know, starting from now, all the way till next year, should give us plenty of time to plan for something like that. So I would like to have that agendized for a discussion or just a suggestion. And if there's support from other council members, staff could just start working on it.
I support that for staff to work on it.
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a question. When is North Brand Boulevard improvements coming back to us?
Councilmember Najarian, member of City Council, Mayor Asatrian. Staff in Public Works currently is in the process of collecting the necessary data so we can provide the options to council. It should be done. Mr. Hernandez can give more detail. Should be done in the next couple of weeks or so. So I'm assuming the first or second meeting in December.
Nothing for me tonight, in the interest of time and being election night.
Thank you. I'm going to hold all my comments as well. All right, great. Next item? Yes. Oh, woo, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging me. Mayor Asatrian, member of City Council, gives me great pleasure to announce my selection of our next Director of Public Works and respectfully ask your approval of the appointment of Daniel Hernandez as the new Public Works Director. And if I may, I'd like to read a short bio of Daniel. Daniel, with 19 years of experience, brings a blend of public service dedication and private sector efficiency. He's a highly accomplished leader with extensive experience across the public sector, aerospace, and manufacturing industries. In the last eight years, Daniel has led Public Works Departments across Los Angeles and San Bernardino Counties, serving as Public Works Director in the cities of Huntington Park, Commerce, San Bernardino, and most recently as the interim Public Works Director of this premier city of Glendale for the last 10 months. He modernized each department and each of his stops by implementing productivity measurement systems, cost controls, work order systems, and customer care initiatives, significantly boosting their effectiveness and responsiveness. Daniel grew up in southeast Los Angeles. He graduated from Cal Poly Pomona with a degree in industrial engineering and holds a master's degree in business administration from Pepperdine University. He's married to his wife of 13 years, who's present here, and their two children, ages 8 and 10. He loves spending time with his family and is an avid sports fan. As a matter of fact, he was in New York for the last Yankees Dodgers game. So with that, again, I respectfully ask your approval of my appointment of Daniel Hernandez to the position of Director of Public Works.
Who's he cheering for? Dodgers all the way.
Sir, carefully, right. Madam Mayor, I move that pursuant to Article 4, Section 4 of the Glendale City Charter, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Daniel Hernandez as a Director of Public Works. This motion shall be the written statement of appointment of a person of recognized attainment as set forth in Charter Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2, as required by Article 24, Section 10 of the Charter. The Civil Service Commission shall certify the fact of Mr. Hernandez's appointment as Director of Public Works to the Director of Finance.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Rarpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So I don't know if Mr. Hernandez would like to say a few words, but welcome officially, long-term, to the team. Your dad is super awesome. He has built a reputation at the City Hall for being a team player. And as you continue to visit Glendale, know that when the streets are paved, the lights are on. The crosswalks are there to keep us safe when we're crossing street. It's because your dad's leading that effort and a whole team of people that are keeping our city as beautiful as it is.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a minute or so, just to thank a group of people. I want to thank the City Council for the approval of my appointment. I look forward to serving the community with the best of my ability. This obviously is a great honor and a privilege that I don't take lightly. I want to thank our city manager, Rubik Alanian, and our assistant city manager, John Tuktalian, for their support and encouragement for the last 10 months and their confidence in my appointment. I want to thank the executive team, Paula, Elena, Jason, Onig, Bradley, Chief Sid and Fish, Michelle, Mike, Lesa, Manny, and I can't forget Mark Young, for their support during my tenure as the interim director, the positive vibes during the recruitment process. I really hope to build on the foundation that we've established. Next, I want to thank the dedicated men and women of the Public Works Department. Specifically, I want to thank Martha, Sarkis, Dan, Kevin, and Shay for their outstanding service, diligence, commitment, and dedication to the department. They made my tenure as the interim director as smooth and seamless as possible. I look forward to continuing the progress we've made and for the years to come. Lastly, I want to thank my family, as mentioned here in the audience. First, my children, Olivia and Noah. You two are the reasons I work so hard. I hope I made you proud. I look forward to bringing you to many future city events. And lastly, my wife Nancy, thank you for being my unwavering support. I love you with all my heart.
Would any of my colleagues like to say a few words?
A word of congratulations. Thank you for the dedication and hard work that you've already shown to the city of Glendale. I guess now we've made it official. So looking forward to working with you. And as I mentioned during our conversations earlier, Public Works is always one of those things that people first notice about a city, the conditions of its roads and sidewalks. We're very fortunate to have a city that has maintained high standards. And I know with your leadership, we'll continue to do that. So thank you, congratulations, and congratulations to your family. Thank you for allowing us to have your husband and your father here in the city of Glendale to do the important work that he does.
Thank you.
I'll just say congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. I know you'll do a great job. We're happy to have you.
Congratulations, and I think the city chose the right person, and you chose the right city, because I could tell in your voice how, when you spoke about your family, how passionate you were. This is a family town, and you're a family man. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next are action items. Action Item A, City Treasurer, Regarding City of Glendale Investment Policy. Oh, sorry. My apologies. Next is Community Event Announcements, 3 minutes, 5-speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under a general oral communication subject to the 3-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. We have two speaker cards for this item. And our first speaker is Rue Steve.
I have some photographs that were sent as well. They're kind of small. Okay. I just want to talk about the Kenneth Village. I've lived here for 27 years, and it didn't used to be just like complete trash on every pole, everywhere, city property, trees, these things everywhere. I walked there this morning. There were bills from August, from November, from September. People never take their stuff down. So I suggest that at each end of Kenneth Village, we put some kind of permanent sandwich board or something where people can post their things, and then put signs on the posts that say, "City property, post no bills." And that's, then, when they're there, I can just go by and take them off. And you can see, I mean, there's, I understand, if you have a lost cat, you want people to see it, but it's just, they're just covered and covered and covered and covered and covered. And then they fall off, and then they just sit there on the street. And it's gross. I live here. I like it. I pay taxes here. And talk about the North Brand abomination another time.
Thank you. I think staff was nodding that they'll look into it and they'll take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Our next public speaker is Susan Devine. You have 3 minutes.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to raise my concern about very important issues regarding houses. Housing is a huge concern for our whole country right now. I'm here tonight to raise my concern about the way that low-income housing is being run here in Glendale. My parents lived in 17 years in a low-cost apartment in 1760 Gardena Avenue. They were in the first group of lottery winners and occupants when this low-income building first opened in 2007. Over the course of this last 17 years, we have witnessed more and more irregularities and questionable practices going on in the building, in direct violation of the rules governing the operation and management of these types of houses, housing. The apartments are being subverted to make illegal money large under the table. Cash payments are being made to sublet the apartments to people who are not authorized, do not qualify as low-income tenants, and should not be there. If you want to see for yourself, just go and take a look in the parking of this low-income housing apartment. And you will see probably, you will probably wonder how so many of these low-income tenants can afford all of these luxury cars which you are going to see there in parking lot. We have contacted the Glendale Housing Authorities a few times regarding this and other issues, and other people were doing the same thing. Unfortunately, they've been kicked out, and it was silence. And we have asked them to look into, but nothing had been done yet. They said they would do something if we give them specifics. We gave several information. We gave them a lot. And we were asking to step on and try to clean that mess. And we gave them, if, I'm not talking about all other stuff which I mentioned already, but we gave them one clear example of violation of California Civil Code 1962, requiring that owners provide a copy of the rental agreement of lease or lease to the tenant within 15 days of execution by the tenant. We have requested a lease for many years now, and we never got it. We kept being given promises, but we have never, never been given a copy of the lease. From what we know, most of the tenants do not have leases. Even though if they will suddenly show you some leases, it means they just got them recently, most of them, like 80%, at least 90%. For the people who should legitimately be in the building, major building safety health codes are also being closely negative.
Your time is up, but if we can gather her information, and then I would like staff specifically to send me the details of how it's being done. Thank you. Please don't leave. If, City Clerk, if you can get her contact, thank you.
Our next item is action items. Action Item A, City Treasurer, Regarding City of Glendale Investment Policy. One resolution adopting the city investment policy for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On today's theme, I'd like to urge everyone to get out and vote. And we are supposed to have a presentation, but we don't yet. As a veteran, I'd like to congratulate all the, salute all the veterans out there on Veterans Day and congratulate Mr. Hernandez, who's not here. Today, we're presenting the annual report as of June 30, 2024. Our objectives.
Is this for both reports, Mr. Bernanke?
Huh?
Is the presentation for both reports? Because I think we just read the investment policy.
No, this is for B.
Oh, for B?
Yes.
Do you want, Madam Mayor, you want to read both into the record?
Sure. Let's read both.
Okay.
Let me read Item B real quick. Item B is City Treasurer, Regarding City Treasurer's Annual Review of the City's Portfolios. One motion, accepting report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
Thank you. The attorney is always setting us straight. We need to go back, actually. Here we go. Our investment objectives, as usual, is preservation of principal, ensuring liquidity, and then ensuring yield or securing certain yield. Our portfolio, our portfolios for the city of Glendale, I'll number them. It's over 1.1 billion at this point. In terms of asset allocations, the major change from last year to this year is the investments in CAM, California Asset Management Program, and the reduction in LEAF. So we reduced the amount that we had invested in LEAF when we increased the amount in CAM, basically. The rest of them are relatively the same in terms of asset allocation. And our yields are fairly comparable to comparable cities. That is my report. If there are any questions. A detailed report is in your staff report, if you'd like to go through them. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
I don't have any questions. Does anyone?
Just CAM again?
California Asset Management Program. It's a California pooled investment fund.
It's like LEAF?
Just like LEAF. Yeah, just like LEAF, but a different program. There are higher interest rates and much easier to work with, basically. Just as secure as LEAF.
I have no questions.
Questions?
And I have no recommendation in terms of policy changes. We've made some changes to the policy just recently, I believe, so, I don't believe we did, so.
Right. Anything else?
Need a motion?
Yeah, for 8A and B.
I'll move 8.
8A1 and 8A2. AB2, excuse me. 8B1.
8B1.
And 8A1. I think both items were written in the record together.
And 8A1.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Rarpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Now, what's next?
Next is Action Item C, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Professional Services Agreement With Eagle Aerial Solutions for Consulting Services Related to Senate Bill 606 and Assembly Bill 1668, Water Conservation Compliance Efforts Carried Over From 102224 Council Meeting. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into and execute a professional services agreement with Eagle Aerial Solutions for Consulting Services Related to Senate Bill 606 and Assembly Bill 1668, Compliance Efforts in the not-to-exceed amount of $156,710.
I did watch the City Council meeting. Do any of my colleagues have a need for a report or have any additional questions since the last meeting? Okay, so I'm going to pose some of the same questions that I posed during the briefing. What happens if we don't move forward with this?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Asatrian, members of the council. If we decide not to proceed with this agreement, that will expose us to a risk of not meeting the reporting mandates to the state. Consequently, we could be subjugated to potential penalties as deemed necessary by the state. And so this is something that we have to report on an annual basis.
Okay, so how much of penalties are we talking about?
That has not been determined yet. Really, and the stance that the state is taking is that they're not looking to enforce, but they're rather looking to educate and figure out ways that they can help water utility agencies meet this reporting mandate. And so that will be, we have until 2027 to comply with the mandate. And so essentially, we have 2 years from now to comply.
So why now? Why is this in front of us now?
Well, certainly, this is really, this stems back to 2018. You know, we were coming off the heels of one of the most severe droughts we've experienced in California history. That was when then-Governor Brown implemented these two legislation. July of 2024 was when it was refined to include the additional sectors, that is, CII, commercial, industrial, and institution. And so we have to be able to determine what the water use objective for that sector is. We just don't have the expertise internally, nor do we have the software to be able to undertake that assessment.
Right. So having, so say we don't move forward, and you're noting 2027. Here's where I find issue with this. I talked about the unintended consequences of bills that are passed on the state level that then leave the locals to take on additional work, which ends up costing us money from our own budget. And it breaks my heart at a time where our residents can't pay their rent and their utility bills that we, as a city, have to cough up $156,000 or close to $157,000 for consulting service. I'm not expecting us, as a city, to have the ability to do this on our own. So what if we took the route of sending a bill to the state? Before we move forward, because you're saying 2027.
Correct.
And
Right.
Us saying like, these are the investments that we're looking to make based off of our budget. You have forced this upon us, which is costing us this much. If we do that now, before the deadline, is there a penalty that comes along?
Well, the penalty will not be assessed until 2027. So if we decide to take that action, that is something that we can ascertain. I will say that during the development period for this legislation, the state, they did insist that they will not be providing funds or subsidies to water agencies. You do have to go through, you know, a comprehensive grant application, and that will be based on each utility agency, depending on certain factors such as, you know, disadvantaged communities and such. And so we can certainly go that route, but I do not believe that the state will be willing to provide financial assistance for us to undertake this assessment.
But there are possibilities for grants specifically for this?
Certainly.
Okay. So I know that it was, it seemed like it was a 2-2 last time. I'm of the mindset that I would like to send a bill to the state, along with any other bills that you can come up with that we've been spending on consulting services instead of actual services to our residents. And have that request with the bill be something where we also ask them to identify grants that we can apply for, that the state will pay for, for a program that they came up with to cover the costs before we move forward. So that's where I'm at. I don't know how my colleagues feel about this.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I think the other issue we need to look at is, we are, today, we're complying with all the mandates that they had for us for 20, up to 2025, which is 55 gallon per capicup per. And our residents, they've done their share, and we're still on the third phase of drought. And, and we're charging them drought fee as well. So I don't, until today, on, today, from today until 2027, I'm sure they're going to come up with other mandates and regulations, you know, like ARB does and ARQMD does, and they, they wake up one morning and they come up with other ideas that they, they're going to force on, on the city. So I think this would be a, we still have two, two more years to go, and I think we need to wait and see what else they're going to come up with before we do anything.
Correct, Councilman. And as, as Mary mentioned, that is a dialogue that we can continue with the state. We can share our perspectives, and we can certainly get their feedback and input in terms of what they think of our suggestion.
Thank you. And my vote stands the way it was last.
So would you be okay with us taking the route that I recommended? Just as a, as a test and a point to request the grant?
I wouldn't hold my breath, I would, but I would take that.
I know, but if we're talking about disadvantaged communities, I can speak to the lack of green spaces we have in South Glendale, as well as our poverty rates that were presented today in the afternoon.
And one thing I do want to mention is that this potential assessment will have other benefits for the city beyond just meeting or appeasing the state mandates. For example, it will help us identify these large green spaces or landscapes that we can, that are using potable water for irrigation. And that data is critical when we look to expand our recycling water infrastructure. And so we will actually utilize that for our recycling water master plan. So there are other benefits that this will present to the city. We can also utilize it to really customize our marketing outreach to our community as well.
So I think those are valid points, and I, I think it would be worthwhile, I think, since you've been with the City of Glendale, I think it would be really nice to have a report come with suggestions from our water staff with recommendations, whether it is looking at our green spaces or any other thing. But the difference is that we get to make a decision based off of our budget of where we want to spend it, and that's proactive approach versus something being decided and then just shoved down to the local to cover the costs.
Understood.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I think we're going down a dangerous path here. We, we get mandates all the time from the state. I mean, there's all kinds of legislation, for instance, just throwing one out. Organic food recycling. This is the nature of the work we do. This is, this is not something new, and, and I don't know why we're taking a stand on this item. This is about the state trying to get a handle on water use because we're in a long-term drought. Even though we've had some good rains over the last year, we're still in a drought. It's going to continue with climate change. This is not going away. The state wants to be able to figure out how water gets allocated and to get us all thinking about where and how water is being used in our city and to be able to manage that better. I, I have no idea why we're making an issue out of this. So this is something, to me, very fundamental, and I don't want to be a city that starts playing games with the state, thumbs its nose at things that are obviously of important statewide interest, such as managing our water supplies.
So I would appreciate the state coming in as a partner on this very important topic, and I'm not taking away from the importance of what this presents and the opportunities it presents. I have a philosophical difference in the approach because they are not coming in as partners. They're making a decision and telling us to cough up the bill for it. And I, I actually, as I was talking about other bills, I was thinking about, I remember one of the reports that came from staff had to do with the multifamily and the recycling. And when I asked at the end, well, are they going to come and check? Is there actually going to be? And they're like, no, this is just, you know, just to do it because we have to meet a mandate, but here we are coughing up hundreds of thousands of dollars from our budget that could be going elsewhere in our community. So I, it's not the, the meat of the issue that's here that, that I have an issue with. I just, I keep seeing these consulting contracts, and it, it just drives me wild because, again, these are funds we can be investing in other spaces.
Well, then, let's push back on every mandate we get. Anytime there's an unfunded mandate, let's vote no and see how that, how far that gets us with the state.
Well, the, my staff is saying this isn't due until 2027, and there possibly could be grant opportunities, so I would like to take that route before anything else. Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully agree with your position on this particular item. It is an unfunded mandate, and Chisholm, I know that this isn't, you know, this is maybe something best left to the, the policymaking board to give direction. You're given a state law, I guess, two laws that were, were combined, and you're under the obligation to follow that. But this, you know, far too often, we've seen the state impose mandates on us that are not funded. Now, this is different because we have a different agency that gives us water, and that's the Metropolitan Water District. So this is the state, in my opinion, stepping in and intruding on the authority, the rights, and the obligations of the Metropolitan Water District, for which we have a appointed member in Mr. Kasakian. And where's this going to get us? I don't know. The state may tell us to go, you know, go jump in the lake. But unless we start to express our opposition to the micromanagement of the legislators in Sacramento, and it's not just water, it's on a variety of issues that we've, that we've dealt with. They want to take away local control from us. And that's why I'll be joining the mayor in opposing this at this point. And it may just be symbolic. At the end of the day, we may get the letter from the Attorney General saying, you know, we're going to cut your fill-in-the-blank funds unless you comply. But I think we do have an alternative. It's not like we're not seeking proper water management policy. Mr. Kasakian could give a lecture on it, I'm sure, if we were to, to bring him up to do it. But there's a, there's a local organization, a regional organization that handles it. Let the state stay out.
So I, I don't think we're, I mean, from staff, what staff is telling us, this is not going to be something that we are going to be penalized for because if we do this now, we still have, you know, that, that deadline is 2027. And, you know, I wasn't just giving you lip service about you bringing something that you think is worthwhile for the City of Glendale for us to look at. I, again, am in agreement with what the intent is. I just don't like the practice, and it's the same things I've been opposed to when we, on a local level, have made decisions that are impacting our small businesses and our residents without creating incentive programs for them to move into that space. So that's where I'm at. Sure, I mean, if there's no more comments?
I had comments, but I think, you know, my position is, remains unchanged on this. I think that it's important for us to, at times, get ahead of an issue, and my concern with the position, although in principle, I can understand it and appreciate it, I think that kicking this can down or kicking it back up to Sacramento may end up costing us more down the road if we see that other agencies are complying, as I anticipate they will, and then we look around for an able and capable consultant to provide us with accurate data, and we see that they may already be hired on as consultants to other agencies, and we stand around scratching our heads once again as a city, wondering why we are stuck with the choices we're stuck with, given, you know, some of our prior decisions. I, I think that, I understand and I appreciate that there are unfunded mandates foisted upon us, and it's not just on this item, it's on a number of items, not the least of which is the number, amount of housing that we've been suggested to build, forcefully suggested in terms of arena requirements and others. I just think that this is an area where it will also provide us and our water division of our utility of Glendale Water and Power information that can help us better manage our resources, our very limited resources. You know, we've had discussions here on this dais about artificial turf versus natural turf or playing fields, understanding how water is utilized, where it can be better utilized, I think is critical and important for all of us. And if it was something we could do in-house, I would be supportive of that. But certainly, staff is saying that they would be better served by this expenditure to have a professional consultant come in and provide us that information that then we can use to make better decisions as a council. For that reason, I'd be supporting it.
Okay. I would add that I'm happy to work with staff on drafting something. And I, I am serious about requesting the grant for it. And if there are additional things that we can add to that, I would look to you for advice.
Yeah, I will say, Council, we are coming back to this council next month to present our recycling water master plan, as well as our comprehensive infrastructure master plan. And so I think that will really paint a picture of where we are in the grand scheme of things, and really where this will fall in terms of when we talk about our very limited water supply. And so that will give you a flavor of sort of what the next steps will be. But as mentioned, I will open up that dialogue with the state to see what the potential alternatives could be for this, this particular item.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
Sure, I mean, I made not a motion before in the action, but to submit the, submit the bill to the state?
Yeah, so I, I'd like to send a letter with what this would cost us and request that, within, within that note, the different disadvantaged communities that we have in the City of Glendale and where this funding could be placed, and request information on grant opportunities to help cover the costs.
And since we have time, we still have another two, two and a half years to go, so we can work on the, on getting other fundings for it.
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members brought in.
No.
Farpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
No.
Nandarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatran?
Yes. All right, next item?
Next item is Public Works Regarding Appeal of Transportation and Parking Commission Decision Regarding Installation of Always Stop Controls at the Adams Street and Schofield Drive Intersection Continued from October 22, 2024 Council Meeting. One motion setting the matter of a public hearing or in the alternative to motion ordering the Transportation and Parking Commission to rehear the matter or in, in the alternative three, motion dismissing the appeal forthwith.
I, again, watched the meeting. Do my colleagues have questions or comments that?
None.
So what's the fastest?
The fastest?
For our residents?
The fastest would be for us to come back to the city council for the council's consideration, to set the public hearing and then to, for, for us to have the formal public hearing.
Okay, so that's what I would be supporting.
So question?
Yes.
So your, your, your position is if it, if it goes to, back to TPC, is it TPC? Yeah. And it may get appealed back to council again, so we have to hear it ultimately.
So obviously, I don't want to speculate on how they would vote on the item, but we have the information that was requested that night that unfortunately, we didn't have at the time, which wasn't necessarily germane to the, to the actual stop that was being proposed. But nonetheless, we have the information. We've, we've since spoken to commissioners. So we feel good about staff's ability to present a thorough item, but at, at this point, I wouldn't want to speculate that they would approve the item.
No, I understand. Even if they approve it, it may get appealed to council again. That's, 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 that's the issue, I think.
Right.
It is possible, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Madam Mayor, so the, so the issue, as I understood it, was, was a 2-2 tie. There was one commissioner who was asking for additional information that was not available, and because of that, he abstained.
That's correct.
So what you're saying is you have that new information. You were not expecting that other location issue to be so, you know, important to that. My opinion, Madam Mayor, is, is with this information, it goes back to the, goes back to the, the TPC, that one commissioner who felt he needed more information before casting a yea or a nay vote, have a chance to review it along with the other members. And if it's approved, I don't think it'll be appealed. I think the issue was if it's not approved, that was your appeal this most recent time to us because you believe that a stop sign is important at that location.
And it's warranted, yes.
Yeah. So I would say, let's give it, you know, I would prefer that we give it back to the TPC and let our commissioners do what we have tasked them to do.
At the last TPC meeting, we did canvass the commissioners. They decided to cancel the December 23 regularly scheduled meeting, and we have a special meeting planned for January 27. That's our next regularly, or next scheduled meeting. However, we could canvass them, but again, that, it's subject to their availability.
So at least for me, I've always talked about not wanting to hold things up. So it's already in front of us, can't guarantee that no one's going to appeal. So I would like it, you know, however, we can get it done the fastest, which is staff is saying, just us taking it up ourselves. I, that's what I would be supporting. But I also recognize we have three cards and two callers. Okay, all right. Unless my colleagues had other questions or comments?
No, I'm ready to make a motion once we hear from people.
Go ahead.
We have two cards and one caller. The first card is by Gary Ackerman. Gary, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I live on the west side of Adams Hill. I've lived in my house 53 years. I'm very aware of the area because I grew up in the area, also the youth. I think the stop sign at Schofield is a dumb idea, and I'll explain why. Coming here tonight, I, there must have been about 15 cars on, going down Palmer, turning down La Boyce and Palmer. Yeah, I couldn't get out. And I know the city traffic engineering did a study at the site. But if they put a stop sign there, there is so much traffic coming down Adams, going over Adams Hill and going down Palmer and La Boyce to get over the hill to go to LA, it's going to be one heck of a roadblock. And I would say that they should not put a stop sign there. Instead, they should have put a stop sign at, uh, Altaloma, I think his name are, on Palmer. It's three stops from Adams. That would give us a break of cars coming and also give us an opportunity to get out more safely from our neighborhood. And I think, I don't know, I don't know when they, they did their study, but they really ought to do a study from four o'clock. But they really ought to do a study from four o'clock to six o'clock and see what the real traffic is. Because it's going to be such a jam on Adams if they put a stop sign there at Schofield. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Rafik Babachanian, and he requires translation.
All right, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Rafik Babachanian. My name is Rafik Babachanian. I've been living around 13 years at 1255 South Adams and about 29 years in Glendale. I am here today, once again, to present my opposition of installing the stop sign at that specific location and the removal of the two parking spots in front of my house. Based on this recommendation, it seems like this is going to be affecting my family only. And it's going to be specifically affecting my family's ability to get in and out of our driveway. I do understand that the safety of this road is important for everybody and my family as well. and the north side, which will help mitigate the issues that happen on that street, including speeding. For example, there are about five stop signs between the top of the hill all the way leading down to Verdugo. And I've asked most of the residents there, and none of them have expressed any concerns in regards to those stop signs that are presented there. However, the lack of stop signs between Palmer all the way to the top of the hill has caused an issue where individuals can speed up. And I do understand that installing stop signs is important. And I, I personally think we should install three stop signs. However, I do not think installing it directly in front of my house is necessary. And especially that it's removing two parking spots. If you look on other streets in Glendale, you'll see there's other parking, excuse me, there are other stop signs. However, they do not intrude on the parking spaces available for those residents. I just want to understand who was the, who, who was the individual or who were the individuals who initiated this idea to install the stop sign in front of my house?
He wasn't asking. Sorry, go.
No worries. However, they only were, they were not as successful and they caused annoyance to all the residents around. I do understand that stop signs need to be installed. There was, in the small area in the corner of Adams and Palmer, there, there's two stop signs within 10 meters of each other. However, there aren't many on our street. And I do understand the need for installing stop signs, but please do not remove the parking spots as it will affect my family and we will have to park elsewhere, maybe farther than our house.
Thank you. Was that with the translation? Yes, okay, all right.
Next speaker?
Yes, please.
Next speaker is Brian Spence.
Good evening, council. This is a little challenging because I know my neighbors and I'm at other side of the street and other side of the fence on this issue with them. My name is Brian Spence. I've resided on Adams Street between Schofield and Green for over a decade. As council members mentioned, the last time we were here to discuss the stop sign a few months ago, governing is looking out for the benefit of many, which sometimes causes the inconvenience of a few. This is a prime example of protecting the safety of all who live, drive and walk along Adams Street, including myself and my family and my neighbors, with the addition of a stop sign with the unfortunate result of inconvenience of few by removing a couple parking spaces. The inconvenience will be minor. I live, as I said, across the street from where this is proposed. I do not see the stop sign resulting in a traffic backup. My neighbor himself has said other residents where stop signs are near their driveway do not have issues backing out either. Additionally, I understand the city has investigated other intersections along Adams and ruled them out due to a variety of factors. Please, let's move forward with the stop sign on Adams Street to slow traffic and protect our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have one caller. The caller is Nicholas Dyes. Nicholas, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for having me. I just give you some background. I'm a father of two. I've lived in Adams Hill for seven years now, but I grew up playing Glendale Region 88 AYSO soccer. So I've been a longstanding member of the community. And I come to you, much as Brian with a heart on my sleeve, asking you for empathy, especially if you have children, on the absolute need for parking signs on Adams. One of the draws of our beautiful city of Glendale is its walkability. As mentioned previously by Rafik, the whole LA side of our hill has stop signs down the way at every corner. One stop sign is only the start. And at the very least, we need to do this, and then we shouldn't even be done there. I believe that the location, I don't have a lot of opinions on, but I can say that we need these stop signs. I dream of my children one day being able to walk to John Euro Elementary School. And I'm on the side of Adams Hill up against the cemetery. And I just can't bear to let them cross that street. When I walk my dog and my child over there, there's no crosswalks. And even with the flashing speed signs, the blinking light up at the top, the drive slowly signs that were put up and torn down by speeding cars, it's just ignored. And oftentimes, it's even more than ignored, it's mocked. Because the way that people speed, I think that the reason that there's traffic on the street is actually it's clocked in navigation apps as a through fare between Glendale and the LA side. So if stop signs were put there, one, more than one, those apps would start sending people who already are predisposed to drive quick on their route to go through our neighborhood. So I just think that this is an absolute must. I look to the council of council on how we get this back in front of a public hearing as soon as possible and get it done. And I look forward to, you know, working with other community members to make sure that this is just the start of it. And, you know, I, I really think that this is an absolute need because I can tell you residents in this, in this neighborhood all completely agree on this. And public safety is obviously tantamount here. If you have children, will be, it's going to be a tough day when, when something bad happens on that street and everybody's waiting for that because it's so clearly an issue. Thank you for hearing me out and yeah, hoping for this to be resolved as soon as possible because I know a lot of different proposals have, have come and gone.
Thank you, and that is all.
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion?
Just very quickly, I know that for the hearing, there's going to be a notice that goes out. I've said this for other notices, but I want to make sure it's not just in legalese. That there may be some cover sheet or something that goes with it, that the average person can understand that there's a hearing for this item if they want to participate. I don't know if Public Works has that. I know that back in the day, we used to, and then we've done it for some projects. But I don't know if it's become kind of a routine for staff to do it. But again, I know that some of those notices that I've seen is just like, if I was the person getting this in the mail, like an average person not knowing, it's, it's hard to understand what, what's, what's coming and what I need to do. And, and the, you know, talking about the language barriers as well with our constituents.
If I can clarify, maybe I need to have Mr. Israel come up and address. If the, if council grants an appeal hearing, the, the notice goes to the respondent, meaning the agents, the TPC, then any applicant, the, so the people who filed the petition. I don't think that there's a normal 500-foot notice that will go out like it goes with the, the, like the land use appeals. But if the council wants that and makes that part of its motion, then, then we can certainly do it.
Oh, I was under the impression that there was going to be a notice that goes out to the residents that there's a hearing.
I don't believe it.
Can you clarify?
Good evening, Mayor Asatian, members of the city council, Aaron Israel, Senior Assistant City Attorney. The city attorney has corrected, under the Uniform Appeal Procedure in Chapter 2.88 of the Municipal Code, hearing, public hearings for land use planning and zoning matters are treated differently than hearings on matters that do not fall within that category. So the notice that is required is to the appellant, who in this case is the Director of Public Works, the Transportation and Parking Commission, and then all interested parties, parties who have identified themselves as interested parties in connection with the matter. Have the answer and additional questions you may have.
We do have, we do have contact information from people who have expressed their opinion both in favor and against this. So we're happy to provide information relative to the, the date that's set for the public hearing. We could also work with the Neighborhood Association so that they broadcast it amongst their members. So we're happy to, as directed by the council, to increase our, our outreach.
And maybe offline, we can also talk about how we utilize, you know, new technology like email and so forth. Not that because it's legally required, but you know, what are some ways that we can keep our residents informed in that space, in their language, in their native language for them to understand as a courtesy notice versus what's required legally? Okay, thank you. Yes.
My, my, we heard this item two weeks ago, and my vote was for this issue to go back to TPC. But after, after hearing the, both sides of the issue, the residents on both sides of this issue, I think no matter how that vote goes, my, my personal belief is that it's going to be appealed to council. So I'm, I'm willing to vote for, for this item to come back to council instead of going back to TPC.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question. This is crazy. We're talking about one stop sign. Doesn't our Public Works Director have the authority to place a stop sign where he feels the warrants deserve? I know on, on our neighborhood, on Colina and Neodara, a stop sign appeared. I don't think it went to the TPC. I think it was determined by the then Public Works Director or city manager, and it was done. We're spending a lot of time, a lot of outreach, a lot of frustration. What is the policy regarding a single stop sign if in the determination of the Public Works Director, it meets the warrants? Do you know? I know it's your first day on the job officially, permanently, but I mean, it's crazy.
And there are, there are a lot of residents that, for example, have written to me and I forwarded on to staff, like they're asking for a stop sign or a red curb or whatever it may be. Public Works handles it. I was surprised to see this at, on our agenda and thought it was because there was some community appeal for it that led for it to come to a council.
Well, it was driven by the community through our neighborhood traffic calming program, which is, was directed by the council previously to add stops as a traffic control measure. So this was initiated by the, the community, that, that segment of the community within Adams. So they petitioned, and that's what drove it to go to the TPC because they oversee, ultimately, we take items that are a part of the neighborhood traffic calming program to the TPC, which is what was the direction from the, from the city council previously to look at always stops as traffic calming measures.
I think one, one thing I'd like to add is I think the, the biggest friction in here is this two parking spaces that's being removed, basically. And the reason that was given here to us was if there are cars parked there, they may not see the stop sign. So are there any other intersections that have stop signs, but there's no red curb and people park in front of it? Or other streets, we have this signs that, it's like an emblem you put on the asphalt, says stop ahead. And maybe have a taller stop sign. I think if those two parking spaces are not being removed, this issue is done. Everybody's happy, we all go home. I think that's something that we need to look into. If, if there, those parking spaces are not removed and the stop sign is visible and there is a sign ahead that says stop ahead, there are so many streets that have that.
Connecticut has those hanging stop signs.
I mean, this is, this is my, my, my take on observation in this two short meetings that we had in 10 minutes. I think if those things are not, the parking spaces are not removed, I don't think the gentleman is against it either. So just a friend's suggestion, I know again, it's your first day and it's never going to be easy. But I think that would, that would take care of this whole issue.
Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment? I totally agree with Councilmember Najarian. I can't believe, this, this has been going on for about three years or more for one stop sign on a street that obviously needs traffic calming. So yes, if there's a way we can relook at our policy so that Public Works can make these determinations based on what's best for the city, these things should not be coming to council. I mean, we're wasting so much time on, on, on this kind of an issue. So that would be, I would, I would support us reconsidering that. I'm also prepared to make the motion here when, I guess, City Manager Galanian finishes what it looks like he wants to say.
Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, Councilmember Najarian, you are correct. At the time where the Public Works Director had the authority to install warranted stop signs, they weren't being used as traffic calming measures. However, since now, recently, trap, stop signs have been included in our traffic calming guidelines. And every item within that traffic calming guidelines will have to be presented to TPC for approval. That's the difference.
I got it, thank you. Yeah, can we fix that?
I was going to suggest you can make a motion, give us direction, and we will go and see if there's any leeway within the traffic calming guidelines so that, again, the Public Works Director can be authorized to install stop signs regardless of.
Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment? I totally agree with Councilmember Najarian. I can't believe this has been going on for about three years or more for one stop sign on a street that obviously needs traffic calming. So yes, if there's a way we can relook at our policy so that Public Works can make these determinations based on what's best for the city, these things should not be coming to council. I mean, we're wasting so much time on this kind of an issue. So that would be. I would support us reconsidering that. I'm also prepared to make the motion here when, I guess, City Manager Galanian finishes what it looks like he wants to say.
Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, Councilmember Najarian, you are correct. At the time where the Public Works Director had the authority to install warranted stop signs, they weren't being used as traffic calming measures. However, since now, recently, stop signs have been included in our traffic calming guidelines, and every item within that traffic calming guidelines will have to be presented to TPC for approval. That's the difference.
I got it. Thank you. Yeah, can we fix that?
I was going to suggest you can make a motion, give us direction, and we will go and see if there is any leeway within the traffic calming guidelines so that, again, the Public Works Director can be authorized to install stop signs regardless of whether they are considered. In some cities, they're considered traffic calming measures, and some, like previously we see of Glendale, they didn't.
Okay.
You can give us direction, and then we'll go and take a look, see if we have flexibility. If we don't, and at least we have direction from you, we can proceed with the hearing.
Okay, can I make the motion?
Sure. What motion are you making, though?
I'm making the motion, I'm making 8D1, which is setting the matter for a public hearing. Okay?
Okay.
So it will be, it will come to us for a public hearing. That's the item that's on here. And I can add to the motion that direction to the city manager to see whether we can modify our internal guidelines such that certain traffic control measures like stop signs can be just decided by the Director of Public Works or the city manager.
Second.
The attorney would like to opine on something.
Just the motion needs a date certain. Staff is ready to go as early as November 19th.
Can staff also look into this possible other ways without getting rid of the parking?
Without, the removal of the parking is necessary for a line of sight issue. So that's what the staff is.
There's no other stop sign type we can put there?
This is based on our line of sight.
These are, yeah, Mayor, these are standard stop signs.
Okay.
Okay.
Are they fancy stop signs?
A date certain, November 19th?
Yes.
Yeah, November 19th. I'll add that to my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers, brought men.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is Action Item E. Police Department Regarding Request to Dispense with Competitive Bidding for the Purchase of a New Helicopter from Airbus Helicopters to Replace Police Joint Air Support Unit MD-520N Helicopter N102CG. One Resolution to Dispense with Competitive Bidding and Authorize the City Manager or His Designee to Enter into an Agreement with Airbus Helicopters for the Down Payment and Purchase of a New H125 Helicopter. Two Resolution of Appropriation.
Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, I just invite Captain Robert William, ably assisted with Chief Sid, right behind him.
Madam Mayor.
Or maybe next to me.
Before we get into this, I know that we've had discussions about our concerns about not having appropriate helicopters. I think this item is also before us in part because the attempt to purchase the previous helicopter was nullified. It fell through because the company decided it wasn't making helicopters anymore for police use. So I don't know how thorough a report we need, Captain and Chief. I would recommend that we move forward with this because it's something essential, and the report is available for anyone to read as well as the record of the discussions related to the helicopters during council meetings.
I would agree with that if my colleagues are okay with it.
Yeah, I don't need a report.
Great. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move. For both.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, brought men.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next item?
Captain, you probably practiced that presentation a few times, I bet. We owe you one. You owe him one. He owes you one.
Thank you for keeping us safe. All right, next item.
Next item is Action Item F. Libraries Arts and Culture Regarding Library Arts and Culture Regarding Dispense with Competitive Bidding for Online Cataloging and eBook/Audiobook Platform Services. One Resolution to Dispense with Competitive Bidding and Authorize the Deputy Director of Finance Purchasing to Issue Service Authorization to OCLC USA Inc. for Cataloging and eBook/Audiobook Services in a Not to Exceed Amount of $725,000 for Three Years.
Ms. Lisa Palayo was at our Acting Director of Library Arts and Culture. Will present this item, brief presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Satrian and council members. So just some brief background on this request to dispense with competitive bidding for OCLC USA. So we actually already utilize the services of OCLC USA Incorporated for cataloging services. They basically create records to help us maintain our database of library materials so that patrons can find them through the online catalog. OCLC is the sole source provider of cataloging services for Glendale Library Arts and Culture. And without OCLC services, we would have to individually catalog each item that we bring into the library, which would result in a significant increase in operational staff costs. So just a side note, because this is like library jargon, what cataloging is. Cataloging is basically creating a digital record for each book, which includes metadata such as title, author, subject, ISBN, et cetera, et cetera, so that you can find what you might have gone through in an old card catalog to pull out. You can find that digitally, either in the library or from home or from your phone. So there is no other company in the world that provides cataloging records like OCLC does, and they provide access to over 522 million records. So in addition to cataloging services, the main impetus for the recommendation before you is that in April of 2024, OCLC decided to get into the ebook and audiogame by purchasing the ebook and audiobook platform Cloud Library from Biblioteca LLC. So thankfully, again, for us, Cloud Library is also a service which we already currently subscribe to and which is also a sole source provider for Glendale Library Arts and Culture, providing access to over 750,000 ebooks and audiobooks through a consortium of approximately 80 California libraries. In FY 23 to 24, 3,213 Glendale patrons use Cloud Library, checking out 112,966 ebooks and audiobooks. So we're asking to dispense with competitive bidding to basically bring these two services under one OCLC contract. The fiscal impact does not require additional funds as all services have already been budgeted in FY 24 to 25. And I am happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Are you pro?
Thank you. I think I am. Mayor isn't disposed at the moment, so any comments?
No questions, no comments. I support the item.
I'll be happy to make the motions.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Okay.
Could you just let the ignorant person on the council know, how do I obtain an ebook through the Glendale Library?
Yes, thank you so much for asking. So if you go onto, into your App Store, you just type in Cloud Library, and it'll download. You'll put in your library card number and your PIN number. If you don't remember your PIN number, just give us a call, and we can reset that for you. And then you'll have access to all 750,000 items in the catalog.
Okay, how do we get a library card number?
Yeah, so you can do one online at eGlendaleLAC.org. You can sign up online and get a digital library card. You can set yourself up with that, and then automatically just start doing the downloads. If you want a physical library card, we have multiple beautiful options. One featuring Central Library, one featuring the landscape of Glendale. You can come into the library, and we can update your digital library card. Or you can come in, and we can get you a physical one first. Up to you.
Thank you very much. Sounds like there's a lot of books out there at no cost.
Yes, exactly.
So we have a motion and a second. Any callers?
No callers.
A roll call, please.
Councilmembers, brought men.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next, our Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. Item A, Councilmember Brotman's request.
Actually, Councilmember Brotman has noted that he's willing to move it to the next meeting. Both of his items, Councilmember Najarian. So I.
Well, yours will be fast.
Yeah, so let's do numbers.
You know, again, just to repeat, we've had a lot of discussion on rates and high rates. We just like a refresher course on how the rates are set and what the main cost factors are and how we do the whole thing, just so the public understands.
And I don't know if we need to have to agendize that for a council discussion on whether to bring it back. I think most of us agree that having an informational presentation to review that is warranted.
Yeah, I mean, there's no action that we're asking, that I would anticipate.
So can we just leave it like that?
Just to bring it to an information item.
Can I add just one thing that I have already requested? Water and Power is a good comparison with other agencies, looking at the average household, looking at maybe a high-use household, you know, multifamily versus single-family. And so we really understand where we stand relative to Burbank, Pasadena, Los Angeles, and the county serviced by Edison.
So the report will indicate what the rates were and what the increases were and what's coming next week as well, right? Not next week, next year as well, because the last leg of that increase is in July of 2025.
This is Councilmember Garpetian. Councilmember Najarian's request was as to the methodology of how he calculated the cost of service analysis, but we will include that as well.
Yeah, I like to have that. People need to know how. You know, they ask so many questions about why my rate is this high, so they have to know how it got there, when it got there.
If I may, with what Councilmember Garpetian noted, I know that the last time the rates were brought forth, staff was presenting averages and numbers. And I had noted that those were not necessarily accurate because it didn't reflect the different tiers. And so when somebody's in a different tier and they have a big family or whatnot, that's going to be very different than. I mean, I still have questions about my bill, but, you know. Anyway, but I think it'd be important to have that breakdown so we have a clear picture. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So I guess there's no.
There are no cards.
There are no cards for oral communication.
All right.
Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have 40 minutes to vote.